All right, welcome to our council meeting in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wished to address the council is given the opportunity to do so. The following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by question from council. Group shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort shall be made to avoid interrupting speakers. For your information, the items listed in Section 11 of the agenda are for first reading and introduction, and this council will not take final action on them tonight. If you have questions on these items, please see the city staff in the back of the chambers. Thank you for participating in your local government. And I'll call this meeting to order. And I'd like to now ask if we can have a moment of silence, please. Will all please stand for the Pledge of Legions? All right, and there are no presentations here tonight. And so the next section of the meeting is consent agenda. We have no consent items as well. Citizens forum, any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided by the presiding officer prior to or as soon as practical thereafter a person addresses the council. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on anything other than what's on the table this evening? Our next section will be public hearings. Clerk, please read audits number 2025-4344 and 45 into the record.
... 43, 25-43. The ordinance is approximately plus minus 28.6 acres identified as Nova and 192 PUD Project 25-00013 located north of Elbow Bonsom Memorial Highway west of Hoover Road within the joint planning and annexation agreement GPA in accordance with voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.04 Florida statutes. Final public hearing, ordinance number 2025-44. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida assigning a future land use designation approximately plus minus 28.6 acres identified as Nova and 192 PUD Project CPA 25-0005 located north of East Elbow Bonsom Memorial Highway west of Hoover Road from LDR and Motet U. as an additional community center county to see commercial city, providing for lending of official future land use map of the company's plan. Finally, the planning recommendations, proof of location, available if it's a validity copies on file effective date. Final public hearing, ordinance number 2025-45. An ordinance of the City Council of St. Cloud, Florida providing as a new development county of the City of St. Cloud, specifically changing zoning designation approximately plus minus 28.6 acres identified as Nova and 192 PUD Project 25-0001 located north of Elbow Bonsom Memorial Highway west of Hoover Road from CG Commercial General to see commercial general. PUD planned development county to PUD, PUD development city, providing for lending and official future land use map of the company's plan. Final planning recommendations, proof of location, available if it's a validity copies on file effective date. Good evening, Melissa Duncan, Director of Community Development. This case is before you tonight before the voluntary annexation comprehensive plan amendment and PUD, Planned Unit Development Zoning Map Amendment for the project known as Nova and 192. This request meets the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County as it is contiguous to city limits and it is reasonably compact. The existing county future land use is community centered with the commercial general, commercial restricted and planned development county zoning designation. The proposed land use is commercial for the city and the proposed zoning is planned unit development for the city. I think I already said it's reasonably compact. It will have no adverse impacts on the city facilities and is compatible with the surrounding area. There's a graphic representation of the county and cities' future land use designations. Honor before March 31st, 2025, step recommended approval, planning commission also recommended approval, and we are requesting that city council approve ordinance number 2025-43, ordinance number 2025-44, and ordinance number 25-45 for the voluntary annexation comprehensive plan amendment and amendment for the project known as Nova. The applicant is here and staff is available if you have any questions for us.
Thank you. Would you have a panel to speak on this item?
Curtis Arrington, CM Arrington and associate glad to answer any questions you have.
We have, first we have Mindy Shaam. Is that, sorry. Tam? I'm so sorry. This is for item number one or item number two you wanted to speak on?
I believe it was for 44 or 43 or 44.
44, which is one for the 28.6 acres? Yes, ma'am. Okay.
What is Osceola County going to provide that St. Cloud can provide?
This is for the commercial project. Is that what you wanted to speak on?
I want to speak on the taxes on the annexation.
Yeah, okay. Well, the one that you put on here was 43 dash, I'm sorry, dash 44.
I wasn't sure if it's 43 or 44.
It's neither one of those. I think what you were speaking about was item number four.
Right.
Okay, that's not coming up yet. I'm just reading the one that you had put on here, so, all right. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item?
Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we need to do them individually, Dan?
Yes, sir.
All right, this is for ordinance number 2025-43.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban, second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher, Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And can I get a motion for item number 2025-44?
Motion approved.
Motion approved. Second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And can I get a motion for 2025-45?
Motion approved.
Motion approved from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Please read the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-28. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately plus minus 997.034 acres identified as encumbrance annexations zones 1, 2, and 4. Project Annex 25-0003 located south of Neptune Road, west of Cross Prairie Parkway, Hickory Tree Road, and Melting Road, and east of the turnpike between Claywoodley Road and Kissimmee Park Road within the joint planning area interlocal agreement GPA in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.04 Florida statutes. Ms. Duncan, Director of Community Development, this case before you tonight is for the voluntary annexation for the project known as encumbrance annexation zones 1, 2, and 4. This request meets the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County as it is contiguous to city limits and is reasonably compact. These voluntary annexations are being processed through encumbrances. So at the time the city provides water and/or sewer services, the property owner signs a notice of encumbrance, which is a recorded covenant that follows the land. And if a property is receiving water and/or sewer services and is outside of city limits but in the joint planning area of unincorporated Osceola County, the notice of encumbrance is signed in order to receive services. This covenant allows the city to voluntarily annex the property once it is contiguous to city limits and the encumbrance again runs with the land. Even if the property is sold or transferred, the notice of encumbrance remains valid. Staff held two community open house meetings on Wednesday, March 5th and Thursday, March 6th, 2025 to meet with any interested property owners to answer any questions and give them information on what an encumbrance annexation means. We addressed what the benefits of annexation are at that community. We talked about all of these items. We talked about how there is faster emergency response with the St. Cloud Police and Fire Departments. We also talked about our accredited public safety. Our police department is accredited by the Commission for Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation, and our 911 dispatch center holds triple accreditations. It's a top-tier emergency response. We have improved disaster recovery, so we have faster debris removal and recovery efforts after hurricanes and tropical storms. We have an accredited building department. The St. Cloud Building Department is recognized by the International Accreditation Service for its high standards, and our compliance division is currently working towards accreditation. We have a proven safety record. We are ranked the safest city in Florida and 37th safest city in the nation based on FBI combined statistics. We have a business-friendly environment. We are ranked 44th among 50 best small towns in the US for starting a business by wealth. We have convenient local government services, so there's access to services by state level offices rather than having to travel to Kissimmee. We have top-tier parks and recreation. So St. Cloud is recognized as a playful city USA and true city USA, offering excellent parks, trails, and recreational programs. We offer lower park and recreation fee. St. Cloud residents receive reduced rates for facility rentals, programs, and activities. And we have simplified solid waste. Our solid waste services are included in a simple monthly bill rather than a lump sum on property taxes, saving an estimated $67 per household per year, which becomes effective October 1st, and there's no county EMS tax. So St. Cloud residents save approximately $245 per year by not paying the county's EMS bills. And at the meeting, we presented these numbers based on the average taxable value of homes in St. Cloud. The net increase is approximately $795 per year, which equates to approximately $66 per month and will become effective on the November 25 property tax statements. Some of the concerns that were heard at the planning commission meeting included the following. There were questions about setbacks whether or not the city would honor the county's setbacks through the permitting process, and it was explained that if a property is in the process of pulling a building permit right now, we look at them on a case-by-case basis and depending on how far along they are, we work out whether they will complete the process in the county or if it would immediately come to the city. In most cases, if it's like your accessory structures and things of that nature, we would bring it into the city for permitting because the city will honor the county's setbacks until the city either assigns a future land use or zoning that is different from what they have in the county. But until that happens, if it happens, we will honor the county's setbacks. Regarding animals, the city back in February of 2023 adopted the county's animal ordinance, and we updated our agricultural zoning to allow the same animals that are allowed in the county for consistency. Regarding the transition of services, solid waste will start as October 1st, and then the, sorry, regarding taxes that will begin on November, in November of 2025. Toho's and other transition of services, any new developments will have to connect to the city water and sewer, which they already have to. I won't talk much about the transition of fire services because I think we can ask the fire chief to speak on that. Postal services, they were concerned that transition that would affect their mail. As of right now, we are not changing anyone's address. We are working with the postal service in the future to see if we can change all of the addresses within the JPA to the St. Cloud address so that there's some confusion. If you live in St. Cloud, you don't have a Kissimmee address. And there was concern, on the next item, there was concerns about their homeowners' insurance increasing. We, the city, participate in the CRS program and earns 35% on blood insurance, which is consistent with the county. And then for the concern about property value decreasing, there's no evidence of that. But of course, we directed people to contact their property office for that. And then the other concern was the amount of acres that we continue to annex into the city. We explained that there are, there is a limit. We have a joint planning area boundary with Osceola County, so once we annex all the land within that boundary, that would be our limitation as of right now as the JPA stands right now. Excuse me. Okay, so honor before March 31st, 2025, staff did recommend approval. When this item went to planning commission, it was recommended for approval by Snyder, seconded by Alexander. The vote did fail because three of the members voted no. So the motion to approve did not stand, and I think Dan can probably explain that a little bit better, but legal advised the planning commission that the motion to approve indicated, I'm sorry, the failure of the motion to approve indicated a de facto denial recommendation. And staff is requesting that city council approve this item, approve ordinance number And at this time, I will ask Jason Miller, our fire chief, to come speak on the county services. Thank you.
Good afternoon or evening, Mayor, council. As a little bit of background, as you know, the city has a joint planning agreement with Osceola County, Fire Rescue Department of the county is involved. As part of that, some of the statistical information is going to be a little bit off, recognizing that in the JPA, we're only providing actual response, we're responsible delta echo calls, which are the emergency level calls. So we pulled a little bit of statistical information from the county, particularly in the Twin Lakes area. That's where the highest call bug was, gave us the best information, which you'll see on your map there. In the Twin Lakes area, so county fire rescue last year had approximately 100 calls for service in that area as a total, of which St. Cloud ran half of those calls. So statistically speaking, we ran half those calls. Now recognizing those are the emergency response calls, those are the calls that they're supposed to possible right out. Our units are over a mile closer than they're closest to. Just put that in perspective, depending on the speed limit and time, it's a minute to two minutes, we can make. For the Gary Drive area, which is off of Hickory Tree Road, there was 12 calls for service that we responded to in that area. King's Crest area, 10 calls for service.
Excuse me, Chief. Melissa, can you pull the map up while we're going through these? Yeah, thank you.
Globally, in almost every case where we're looking at these annexations, the city of St. Cloud has a fire station closer currently or will have a station closer the next year or so. That's particularly a case on Neptune Road where we'll be building Fire Station 35, which will be coming before you next council for approval to build. As for the Twin Lakes area, that's the one I was referencing earlier, we're a mile closer. The neighborhood there off of 192, it's almost right across the street from our fire station. So in all these cases, our stations are closer. When you're talking about structured fire response, you're talking about three stations curling 18 to anywhere from 18 responding based off our chief officer load when we have our truck in service. In almost every case, all three of our stations are closer than three closest county stations to these areas. So our effective firefighting response force would be there faster. As far as an insurance, lower ISO rating, they may see some savings there. Globally, though, we are providing service in these areas where we're wired to through the JPA, and since we're, one can assume by simple statistics, we're running at least 50% of that call load, we're in that neighborhood, it only makes that go closer or faster. You know, highly trained paramedics, EMTs out there on the road every day, and we're already. Period of questions? Councilmember Gilbert?
Just one question. I'm not a fireperson or anything. What does one minute to two minute response time mean in St. Cloud?
Time is issue. For a heart attack, it could mean life or stroke, it could mean a life. Simply stated, a fire doubles in size every minute with these timber films. Sometimes it's even faster than that because everything built in your house is plastic. I go to my grandmother's house when I was a kid, you know, everything was cotton padding and, you know, half of it was covered with plastic. Didn't want you to mess up the cotton, but, you know, everything is natural wood products. You go in your houses now, everything's plastic, everything's styrofoam. The fires burn faster than the powder. Quicker response time is the key to saving problems. That's what we offer. All right, thank you.
And first up, we have Mindy Shaam. Phil DeVivo.
My concern is that when we made decisions to buy our home between the lakes, we knew we were going to be retiring, and we factored in what is important. And it's kind of disappointing that, obviously, these agreements were made with the builder to hook up to, you know, the water and sewer. And, you know, in the future, then obviously that's going to mean tax increases at some point in time. None of that was shared with us, okay? So we're making decisions on whether it's a wise financial move based on what we think and anticipate that, yes, no taxes are going to increase marginally, they always do. But this is kind of a bigger bump, and I just don't understand why, if the agreement was made with the builder to annex in the future, why he wasn't required to disclose that information so we'd have accurate information, making our decision whether this is going to be, you know, a good thing financially, once we're no longer working. My wife and I are both retired now. We've all been hit throughout the whole state of major homeowners insurance increases. It can get tougher and tougher. It's another slap in the face that all of a sudden, this has been known for years, but it was withheld. And I don't understand the fairness in that and why they weren't obligated. Maybe there's no legal requirement, but in all honesty, it's like bargaining in bad face. And, you know, enough is enough. We're getting to the point now that, you know, between pandemic inflation and everything else, it's just, it's tough to, you know, maintenance, groceries, everything. Everybody's, not just senior citizens, but it's tough for us because I can't work more hours when I'm retired. I'm 73. How long, I'm going to go back to work just to, I'm going to cover higher tax bills. So I just don't understand why, if this is a nominee that could happen in the future, why the builder was not required to do that. And I went through my paperwork to see if I missed it somehow, I didn't see that. So you can answer that question for me, and then I have one other question.
Go ahead and ask your question. All right.
All right, so attention home insurance safe. So is it strictly blood insurance safe or is it also for regular homeless insurance?
City man.
Fire chief also spoke to that. We talked about our insurance. Our ISO rating is lower in the city. We have two, the county has. So following the petition, you call in your insurance provider, tell them that you're talented and what our ISO rating is.
Or the ISO rating.
So I can't guarantee you that your insurance rating better reading, so they should, because they're going to look at where your where ID is in relation to your property, which you're in Twin, if you're in Twin Lakes, you should probably be built to those standards to help out.
Right, well, that's to be seen. I've over the years been told many times, you get to this point, your insurance is going to down. It never happens. The other thing I'll say is some of the information provided on here is very misleading. Representation using this example of the 351,900,000 dollars. The solid waste and fire rescue course will be removed. The impression is with this amount that the increase will be about $795. But the fact of the matter is, you know, as at one of the early meetings, I took a picture. Somebody mentioned earlier that we will be billed on our water bill now roughly now 500 bucks a year. So by representing an $800 increase on on this property value, it's really not accurate. Because we still got to factor this in monthly. So that, you know, now that's $1,300.
What is that? I just hand over the this is a picture I took. Put that up on the screen so I can see what the everybody can see looking at.
Sir, can you come back to podium, please?
Yes, sir. And those are Toho Water Authorities. Sir, that's Toho Water.
I understand, but you were moving upon our tax bill.
The water doesn't, no, sir, the water doesn't change.
He's referencing the stormwater fee and the and the so so yes, so currently in bulk on his on his county taxes. The city does have the overall lower county does. Versus, so I I think that's good feedback. And the next time we do these.
Yeah, I mean, because it gives the impression that of only $800 increase, but it's really not only, you still got to factor in that 500 bucks. So this, Lee, is misleading. Saging the numbers, and it's really not true. It's it's bad thing.
We'll make a, that was our first time with that form. We'll we'll update that for the next.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. William Fisher.
William Thomas Fisher, that's WTF. 2373 King's Crest Road. Couple my questions. So this is how you increase your tax roll. King's Crest was established in the 80s, and that basically makes it over 40 years old. St. Cloud has not contributed one dime to the King's Crest subdivision, but now you want us to pay your taxes for parks. Totally against that. You know, when I was here for the planning commission, somebody had asked about the encumbrance, and I don't recall which gentleman, they said that it was was in there. It was virtually 1,000 pages, but I saw it was in there. What I'd like to see is where is that? I'd like to see it. I think everybody out here would like to see that also. Where is it? Does anybody have that?
City manager, I
In the
I'd like to see where it's been reported.
Oh, you're referencing.
You didn't cover it. It's correct. Where is?
So at the top of the piece of paper, number recording.
Do you have that available that I could?
Encumbrance for working.
I don't think so. I'd like to see where it's
website.
The city attorney.
I would love to see that.
City attorney.
Should be in the gentleman's a lot of pages in the documents that are submitted because annexation. Just we can, it's sometimes difficult to match them up because they're not we have to go through the documents. In the document, they are. I'm assuming he's referring to his subdivision. But they are in the packet that has been submitted.
Yes, sir.
I'd sure like to see.
Okay. On the court's website.
Well, it's not on the courts. It's not on the court, but it's these documents are important, which is different. And these are the ones anything else that it's done. So when these individual that owns property currently, when they acquire their property as part of their transaction, they should have been provided a title title report or title work from as part of their closing agent. There in those documents, it is, and it is buried. I'll give you that. And in those documents are these encumbrances.
Yes, sir. I'll give you one more minute to speak.
Well, basically, your planning commission had voted to deny this encumbrance or this annexation. And I strongly suggest you comply with the recommendation and deny this annexation. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
Is it Lee Etcheveria? Name and address.
My name is beside you to have a read. Address. I live in Hanover Lakes. You want the full thing?
Yes, ma'am.
31th Avenue, Austin Drive, St. Cloud, Florida, 4772. Excellent. I have a question regarding the annexation for zone four, item number four. I have a few guys can answer them. My first question is going to have to be, what is the process for determining their market value and just compensation for a property? Should this come to pass? Also, it's my understanding that this is an eminent domain project, right? No, perfect. And Hanover Lakes is already in the city limits. It's in the city in this grade.
Already. It's not being annexed this evening. You may have been at, you may have received 300.
That's perfect, because we received a letter saying that essentially our border, our home was going to be in within Hanover Lakes right there, and that we need because there is expansion of the road.
Also, the county is working on expanding Hickory Tree Road. That's, that has nothing to do with this. We're only annexing properties that are in Hanover Lakes.
Perfect. So who do I go to talk to about that?
Oh. Is this a letter you got with the So as you know, the county is doing some Hickory Hickory Tree. So what 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 is going on because the county is moving forward with that, these individuals that are in that area potentially being part of the future eminent domain domain action, not by the city, but by the county, are receiving letters from private attorneys. To be, hang those attorneys to defend their, the eminent domain action. That's the letter you received. So that has anything to do with this.
That's correct. Yeah, I just pulled you up. You are in the city limits already, and your house backs up to Hickory Tree. So that's why you're getting that from the county. Yeah, it's totally separate issue. You're already in the city. Osceola County. Yep, you're welcome. Thank you. Raymond Lang. Name and address of the record, sir.
Raymond Lang, 2210 Jessica Lane, Kissimmee, Florida. I live in zone one. My concern with the annexation on zone one is several. First of all, I'd like you all to take a good look at me. Because I'm one of the rarest of the rare people in this room. I'm native of Osceola County and St. Cloud. Don't think there's many other people who can say that. Gotcha there. Okay, so I'm looking at this map and gee, the little town that I knew that grid up there on the lake sure has changed in a few years. So I'm looking at where I live over here, went to the meeting in March, talked to the lady, women who were there. Most of the stuff I knew was coming because I understood voluntary utilities and St. Cloud had water for the woods. My concern is that construction on Neptune Road, access to our community by the city services, ambulance, fire, police would certainly be very limited. Neptune Road is a nightmare as it is under construction. And then to add emergency vehicles to it, I'm not sure we would get the service that we will. I know that chief has said there's some fire station out there. I hope that you're very happy about. My suggestion would be to postpone the annexation of zone one. Services and or Neptune Road is more complete for better access. I know that may not be possible by the way you've structured your agenda, but that would be my suggestion. Because I don't see that we're going to get those services because of where we are. We're right on that western border of the zone of St. Cloud. That makes it difficult because it is, and then the fact of the construction, that's a challenge as well. I also have, of course, do at every morning when I go to the work, I'm going to tell you traffic coming across multi and getting on the turnpike is also a nightmare. Coupling that with the new overpass going into what I guess can be called Edgewater turnpike is nowhere near complete. There would be collapse there for either fire or so. It's, I think, maybe a moment on that part of the annexation might be a good idea. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Norman Terry.
Norman Terry, 5031 White Water, sorry, Vantage Court, St. Cloud. I'm here to ask, I live in Twin Lakes, as you heard before. When we purchased there, nobody builders, developers, nobody mentioned the fact that that there was some kind of an encumbrance. And and it may have swayed myself or others from from purchasing in there. Second thing I'd like to do, like to say is, if you look at the map there, you'll notice the Twin Lakes, which has anywhere from 800 to 2,000 homes when it's completed, it's completely encircled by non-city. The only thing that makes us part of the city is one little piece of land up at the far north edge of that. It seems to me that, as somebody else rightfully said, that this is a tax tax base of St. Cloud. Now, I want to say that I've been in St. Cloud since 2007. And I think our fire and police are excellent. But I have to say, this just seems really wrong. Seems like we're trying, like what you're trying to do is to increase your tax base as fast as possible. The voluntary annexation and it seems more like the eminent domain like activity where developer comes in and says, hey, I'm going to build 1,000 homes. And and the city says, okay, we'll provide water, but you're going to sign off, sign away your land. Knowing full well that there are going to be 1,000 people or 1,000 people buying lots of land that don't know, probably don't know anything about the encumbrance. And it seems highly unfair that that is being done in this manner. I mean, nobody, nobody came through, the 800 people that are in in Twin Lakes at this time and said, hey, what we're what we're going to do, what we're and give us a chance to sign an encumbrance with the property. It it like standard away for before the people who actually are going to live there had any say in it. Somebody else has said something about the fact of the benefits and how the way that are described there is not i- if at best, some of them are are kind of I want to mention, I won't mention but I play a lot of football. And great sports, I've heard these are, go take a look at the courts. Go take a look at some of your other, some of your other sports parks. They're deteriorating, they're cracking. They're really in bad shape. And you want to call that a benefit?
All right, thank you. I will say, city manager, how much rate did we just put into the St. Cloud relief ball field?
Our finance director can answer that. I don't know off the top of my head. How much we've for the new ball fields on
Jeff, the finance director, the 17th Street Ball Field is over $13 million.
Thank you. I'm just going to say one thing. So this was actually done in 2014, the JPA was established. It was in between Osceola County and nobody up here was was in these positions when that agreement was made. Right, right, Twin Lakes was like 2016. Okay, yeah. And I grew up here. I've been here since I was 18 months old. And that's going to be annexed in in the next round, the next coming ones. It's inevitable. Four out of five was, we're up here, this show, maybe 35 years, we've seen the growth here. And, you know, it's unfortunate, the county doesn't want to be in the parks business. So we we are assuming that the parks in this area and we're having to put maintenance into them. We just tore up Chisholm Park Boat Ramp. I don't know if you've seen that lately. We just, I believe we just, we're spending $480,000, I believe, on that. That's not, and impact fees don't cover that. So and I don't really impact these really, some of them have, but you know, our town's growing so fast, and those were the same ball fields I played on until this council last year voted to build those fields. So I was very proud of them for doing I do believe there are going to be a lot of benefits. Osceola County doesn't want to surface the area where they want to, you know, JPA establishes the country's all the way almost up to Harmony. So when you say this barely touches, within a few years, it could be two miles out from where you are. Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, that's a great point. If I can possibly add to that, it's, I believe some of the, here here is a little bit misdirected. When, you know, a lot of people mentioned, well, the builder never mentioned this, the developer never mentioned it to me, but I bought the house. We could change the disclosure rule. We modern suburb, we sign these encumbrance agreements with the city. And if you live in the joint planning area in St. Cloud, your property has the potential of getting annexed in the city. We're just, I I made it up to this office to be fiscally responsible for the city. We're just doing what is fiscally responsible thing for the city of St. Cloud.
Except we have Greg Picas. How to pronounce that? Rick, Greg?
Greg Picas.
Picas, yes, sir.
Address is 2660 Red Blush Terrace, St. Cloud. I'm in the Twin Lakes 55-plus community. And I've talked with all the other people there. And I'd like to ask the council to disapprove this, not approve this annexation. I was, a lot of people were blindsided. I bought in that community two years ago. And I was never told this. I read everything. And it should have been disclosed by somebody. And there's, there's no way everybody is unhappy with this whole annexation in our community. There is no value added here. There is no benefit added. Also, there's an impact, virtually impacts people's finances. We're all on fixed incomes out there. And this is a lot more money potentially than, you know, a lot of people can afford. And people are just complaining how HOAs, insurance, parents are impacting a lot of people. It's just just overwhelming. It's just getting out of hand now. And I would like to disapprove. I'm one of the ones that talked during the planning commission. Asked about the zoning and setbacks because I wanted to build a pool in the backyard. I went to Oscola County Director, he says, go back to the city and ask for transition. I asked for the project manager to meet. There is no transition. So, this is all confusing and it's setting up for failure for this process. There's also lawsuits because the city director there said that they'll have the fine print on what they're going to, how they're going to handle this. All I get is riddle. I called this his office three times. Never gotten the answer for my questions. I've talked to the project managers. I've never seen anything documented. It's just please do not approve this with the way
City Manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment if he has offered for his permit, when he now can come to offer him a card, I'll make sure in the process to apply for his pool permit.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I believe there's thank you, Greg.
No, I'm maybe
Next up, we have Wanda Patterson. And would we please have your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Wanda Penny Patterson. I live at 2343 King's Crest Road, Kissimmee, Florida, 34744. I'm a proud homeowner at King's Crest. I've been at King's Crest almost five years. I've been in Florida 35 years. I can't catch up to you yet. I chose to live in Kissimmee, Florida. I did not, I'm not choosing because the word voluntary shows up every so often. Voluntary means I have a choice. To me, I don't want to move to St. Cloud. My neighbors and my friends have said the same thing, so I'm basically going to echo them. It's a higher rate for me. I'm on a fixed income. You're going to impact my family. Don't impact my family. Don't impact my friends and neighbors. I can't afford to keep paying things out, especially in this economy. Not crying poor mouth. I maintain my home the best that I can. Making me move to St. Cloud to pay higher taxes when certain things aren't in my best interest? Why would I want to move to St. Cloud to pay higher things? I don't. Use the word voluntary. Please don't add stress to myself and my family. This is a very stressful move that I don't want to do. It's not voluntary. You're forcing me to do that. You're forcing me to reevaluate my home, the way I have to live, the way I have to pay the higher costs. We all know that. We're not going to rerate all that. We all have higher costs. Here, my friends and neighbors, please do not approve of this. You're going to impact my family. You're going to impact my friends. Do not do that. I'm asking you, as a citizen of the United States of America and Osceola County, please consider not doing this. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
McGregor Love. Name and address for the sir. Good evening. For the record, McGregor Love, 215 North Hill Drive. Here on behalf of Nurekis Heath Land Adventures, our client has been doing roadwork in the county. And that roadwork is subject to certain mobility impact credit agreements. And there is, and perhaps a community development director or Mr. Matt Serris may know the status of this. But we don't, we're not here to object in terms of this annexation. We're here only to note that we need to execute a mobility fee in our local agreement between the county, our client, the CDD, and the city. And we're hoping to be able to do that possibly at the next meeting of this annexation. So, we just wanted to note that for the record, and if anyone on staff has additional information about when that might be able to be scheduled for public hearing, I would invite that as well.
Thank you. McGregor, is this future phases of Twin Lakes? The project is
So, this is, this is roadwork that's being done and with the roadwork on
Which your client
The client was the developer of Twin Lakes, the reserve at Twin Lakes. And the roadwork is done at along the Alligator Road and other portion along the Nolte Spine Road. There's a couple of different improvement projects. And there is a draft of the mobility impact
Sure. And so, we're working on an agreement, as you know, for some of these projects based on the interlocal agreement that the city has with the with regard to transportation. It'll be all ready to go back in front of you in July. Okay, I'll have to deal with that. Thank you. All right, thank you. Esho Escanar? Tried my best. I'll let you correct me when you get up here.
Esho Escanar, 2087 Berlante Drive, St. Cloud, Florida. Now, I, you know, I echo all their sentiments, but I wanted to talk about is the actual for the encumbrance that was signed by the holder in before everything started. So, I'm in banking and one thing we do is cross RT's dot rise. So, questions I wanted to ask was, the encumbrance with the city of St. Cloud is with an LLC. But it's signed by a person that states they're the owner of the property without any title for that LLC. How do we know that that person is acting in the full capacity of that LLC? Has there been an article of corporation registered with the city and make sure that this gentleman had the actual power to sign up the LLC by himself and not any other owners, if there are on that LLC? That's one question. Second document, and this was back in 2015. Second document was signed back in 2018 with a different person representing the same LLC as the title member. He's signing in 2015 and he's right, one article needs to be filed and then we'll see updated article in 2018. Is that and then in the same annexation document, in article, in section 3.1, it states that the city has received an encumbrance that has been executed by all property, all owners of the property, which the encumbrance has won, but it doesn't state any title. It just states the name. Now, what is that capacity? Is that stated? Does that not say? Is there a legal ramification for not having the title for signing on behalf of an LLC? That, you know, should the encumbrance be nullled out as well as the annexation document signed in 2018? What documentation was collected with these were signed by the city at that moment? I know you guys weren't here, but these are the questions that I have. And I pulled these from the website. So, I went in and I saw anything that had to do with and then I pulled these out. There was nothing there showing any proof of ownership of this LLC. For I again, I did pull up so is another person. But everybody is a retitled member. Everybody can do everything or what are they allowed to do? You know, that's, that's the question I have.
We can't give you legal
Oh, no, no, I know, I know. But that's my thing. Like, you know, did you, did we get a copy of those articles? That article of incorporation at the city level at the time of these documents were signed? Right? So, you know, that's
I wasn't here 11 years
No, neither was I. I moved here four years now. Love it.
My whole thing is, you know, it's with the JPA.
Oh, I understand that. 15 and 18, yeah.
Establishing
And also, I just want to add one more thing. That top right little box that's right there. If you look at Zone we have 2,000 foot street or 1,500 foot street on that left side. 1,000 feet is being touched by, what is that, Lightfoot Lake, I believe, is there? And nothing else
Was because it's
My request, and I know annexation is going to happen, just pushing it to a later date because everybody in the community here, four years or less.
City Manager.
Just a comment that we're directly north of St. Cloud this evening.
Yeah, I saw that. From the map
APA brings us all
With Harmony.
It'll be right up
Wow, that's a good guess. Well, thank you, guys.
Richard Watson. Sorry, Ricardo Watson. I apologize. Ricardo Watson. Yes, good evening. And what I got here is this ordinance is involuntary annexation. But that will be intended to this, was never informed of any developer agreement or municipal encumbrance at time of purchase. Let's go through that. Those are not patient with disclosing, that omission material facts. Facts that would have affected my decision to buy. This is not just a break process legal consequences under real estate disclosure laws. That's another I searched the Osceola County clerk. There was no agreement and no preserved encumbrance tied to my property. Under Florida marketable record title act, that's the MRTA, under subsection 72, any such claim from 30-plus years ago presumed foolish. Not enforce what was never legally preserved. The original notice said, oh, I was going to also say, but the original notice said 2,000 plus acres. Now, I'm seeing 200 plus acres. The city has made major changes notice on property owners. The buildings were addressed directly to tenants. So, I had a notice and didn't say my name. So, that's not part of the notice. I was also, I also wanted to note, wanted to put on the record to reflect objection. If you guys serve the legal objection. And it was turned around by the city clerk. I have a copy of that objection letter. Questioning this answers. So 2025 has been ignored. An illegal challenge has already been filed in court which will be enforced. Have been submitted over 50 resident petition. So, I went around, we went around walking and going home to home and getting signatures petition because we don't want this. And the commission voted 3-2 against it at the last meeting, and yet this council moves forward why? Every member of this council swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States in the state of Florida. That oath binds you to protect due process, transparency, and the rights of the people with which you're in place to govern. Yet and yet, when I attempt to file my formal legal objection, city clerk's office initially refused. The timestamp was scratched out. Annexation brings new taxes, regulation, and municipal control people of the affected community no voice, no direct say in this process. That is taxation without representation. It is government. We did not elect in whose jurisdiction All right, first of all, I'm going to ask everybody, we've got other speakers here. Yes, sir. Yeah, we have, we have other speakers here. Well, okay, because we're here, we're here. The audience
Drive Cambridge. Issue I have isn't built. They say it's going to be so we have to rely on miles from my house. I have a heart attack. That's hard because they're very close. Right now, if you have heart attack, one on Station 32 is closed. So, you're going to have to run emergency ambulants out of 900 Minnesota, which is a big fire station. So, I recommend that you wait till you build the fire station to service our community there because something bad is going to happen. Fire stations and trucks, ambulances, and police cars are going to have to go to Fire stations and trucks, ambulances and police cars are going to have to go down Neptune Road to service us. So I recommend when the road is done, just think about doing it. You have the power to say no right now. You can do it later, but I would like to see Neptune Road before you finally incorporate this in. The other little point that I add is we're right on the. And I didn't know how far this is going to go. The city to incorporate all this land. You know, I just think it's going to get too big for what you're doing. And it's going to. Sometime. Last point I want to make is why don't you just annex all these places that are building homes? You haven't got them on taxes because they're going to be big enough and they're going to be broke. Leave the ones that are already here alone. Go after the other ones and get the tax revenue. Tree, those big communities and. Leave that alone so we can just go on life.
Yes, sir, thank you. Fire chief, can you please come up quickly?
The units, the units would not be responding to that fire station thirty one. They have a temporary housing. At a hospital. So their reality is they're close to the fire station. Additionally, to that, you know, we are building that fire station there. Now, something that I failed to mention earlier as part of this JPA agreement. There are typical. We need to count each person, but if they are closer. Over the majority of those cases, you look at what I mentioned earlier. City of St. Cloud is providing all those services and all those calls for service. Any type of benefit coming in to support our services. Those are the emergency calls. So yes, we would have the fire station built there. We're looking at a projected opening sometime around August, September next year. In the meantime, we'd be running those calls out of temporary. A side note, fire station sixty three, which is there, used to be eighty lane, now it's Cross Prairie Parkway. I believe is the third county population station. They're the only fire station in that area. Closest to any fire station. So anytime there's a fire, anytime there's a major issue going on. County is fully reliant on us and city to help them out. City manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that our police station is on Neptune Road. And they're going to be responding, I think. They're closer than the O.C.O.'s office. If we wanted to ask our police chief.
Police chief.
Good evening, Council Doug Gurkey, police chief. I'm also a paramedic as well. The police department actually responds to medical calls also all night long. So when the fire department is actually running, the police department is actually responding as well. I don't believe they do that today right now. So our police officers are equipped with first aid devices, bag valve masks, all different types of interventions. Including AEDs. So anytime it's a cardiac event, law enforcement does respond with fire. And sometimes we'll actually get their first priority care. So and we are literally right at Neptune Road. So anything west of the turnpike, we're in there right now. We already have some land in there. We're controlling it quite a bit. When you think of a population density, officers are actually in the area. We have officers per capita, especially in the city of St. Cloud and the sheriff's office at any given time.
Yeah, and one thing I've noticed, we don't skip on, on public safety. I believe. Two point seven million. And that's going to be a major investment. So. You know, it, it's, it hurts our public safety and all of your, your. You know, if you care about the rest of the community, it's important to have. How many services can an city do this way? We're trying to keep it all right and, and. Jade Bisc- Biscayne.
Please. I'm speaking. I'm on speaking. Here and most of my questions are kind of. Sorry. Well, so I'll still look at. Which is, I think, on Cross River Parkway, I don't think it changed. One point six miles. And I know the station is closed down. And there's, like the gentleman said before, the station on Neptune Road hasn't even built. When is it going to be?
Well, you have to ask questions here and then I'll have him come up.
Okay, so when is it going to be? When is it going to be built? When is it going to be completed? Where actually calls are going to be running out of there.
About station or, or the Canoe Creek?
The one, right, that's going to be on Neptune. The new fire station. So, and I get that the city claims their ISO two and the county is three. Look at the fact that county is very rural, no water supply. So it's very hard for us to try to become, to get higher than a whole three. And you said that the fire. City comes into O.C.O. For joint response. Got cut off when you said how many times you came into King's Crest. Thank you so much. And I wanted to make sure. When trucks were inserted, we have trucks that are on. Another question is. Are there more fire stations we're going to be approving? Because we're going to need more fire stations to cover all that area. Please.
Thank you.
Again, let's try to write them down in order. Fire station thirty five is planned opening September of next year. ISO, our current value is. County's a three. There is split rating available. Fire stations and half. Those areas. So county is a solid three. They also have a solid three X, so there's areas outside of that hydrogen area. Services are considered lower. As far as future fire stations, we have this coming year, we'll be building fire station thirty two. Fire station thirty five is. September, the following. Fire station thirty six. We also have developer agreements for when I. To a total of nine stations. So we're planned, we already have. Properties identified. We have station design templates. We have trucks. So literally to build out the JPA, we did some models, seventeen eight stations. We're building a half of that property.
Yes, sir, thank you. Adam Bailey.
Adam Bailey. Three sixty nine Kings Crest Road. Four seven four. So I'll open that hole when this all started.
Sir, you need to address.
I can address everybody here. I'm here to address everybody. All right. So, and somebody, she was saying all the benefits. Oh, we get public parks. Do we not all use public parks, even if they're not part of St. Cloud? Right? But can anybody answer that for me? Yes, right?
Sir. No, sir.
Who here behind me agrees that we should have? Give your hands, please. I don't see anybody here agreeing with that. For the record, nobody agreed that we want to be annexed. Okay? You all said, hey, you know, don't be mad at us. This all went into a part of us getting on the board, right? You voted in. We can't do anything about, but you can do something about. And that's why you're here, right? You're the ones that are going. You guys, we're not, because we can't do anything about. We can tell you what we feel like, what we believe in. But you know what? You guys are the ones deciding. You mayor, I mean, you know, we're not, we're not deciding. You guys are. Please. How many people you guys have? Are you guys under man? Three people, hundred. So you guys, you can back to me.
No, sir.
Okay, so. How many are there? How much more room is there? Trying to, not one St. Cloud. Police officer, policeman, or anything else in my neighborhood. You will. Well, no, that's. You didn't helping it, the other people, right? No, they haven't been helping out the sheriff. They have not helped out. No, I have an elderly mother. Time when I called two months ago. Minute thirty two minute. And that was coming from the, I think. Uh, department. Believe the nearest. I don't know whether it's time to be on that. Probably well over five minutes. Right? So I'm asking the board to not approve the encumbrance. All right? You guys move to think. I think. I didn't think. You guys can move to other cities. You guys move. So I ask you guys do not vote. I want everybody out, right?
Please sit down. Next up, we have Jessica King.
I'm Jessica King, with Tino eight Kingston Way, also in. My husband and I have lived there. He actually bought the house before I even lived down here. And in the last five years, I've experienced how much everything's changed. His grandmother actually built our house. She owned the house and then. Finally. And I have her old title policy. I have. Work intel, so I kind of know how to look these type of things up. So when we're notified. This was happening. And welcome, you guys, when you mentioned disclosure and everything, and maybe those rules should change. It's so hard to even look up the encumbrance on the county website, the county reporter's website. And I have background in it. So anybody else who doesn't know what. I had actually talked to the county, so, or from the. So I just want to say that was something that I, I know you know that just. That they should be, but it's just. Disheartening how much everything is changing so rapidly. And when you do get notified of something, it's. Can't do anything about it. We can't, but you guys can. So I also just wanted to mention. It seems like everything's been done backwards, like every. All these causes. Huge developments. All these people are rushing. None of the roadways. So we're all suffering with that. That wasn't done in preparation. You're annexing us in King's Crest, I think it's zone one. But you don't have the fire station ready. So it just seems like, why are you guys doing things backwards? I, I almost feel like. Happen. And then it seems now it's just, well, change is inevitable. Growth is inevitable. It's going to happen. I just feel like it shouldn't happen. And everything, everything else was. I don't agree with that. That's it.
Anyone else in the audience like? Name and address for the record.
It's number one sixty.
You're going to have to ask. And I'll ask him to go to podium.
EMT or. Is that. Majority of your officers.
So I see the fire department shirt. So I, I was actually a fireman for ten years up in Long Island, New York. I'm volunteering a paramedic also. No, the officers are actually trained. I, I know a lot of the northern agencies do have EMT certifications. They have basic first aid CPR, AED use. They do Narcan. And obviously we basically start to do the initial assessment and we start working on. So our paramedics, there are paramedics on our SWAT team. We also have medical first responders on our SWAT team as well. Not every law enforcement officer is an EMT or a paramedic. And I will say that's actually for the greater Orlando or regional area. Not many people actually are cross sworn. I don't want to say the way I am, because I've had the chance.
Yes, sir. So the question is, is this an. Or is. Own this for. It has a variety of things. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on the side? Yes, sir. Everybody's already. Anyone else?
How you all doing? Far as the service thing, as of a couple of weeks ago, I figured out that. It's good. We had one of our developer neighbors put some cows in his property. They had on Hickory. So I get the phone call eleven thirty at night, oh, your cows are up. So I go over there, they're not my cows. Chasing cows around. So after about two hours. And I asked the.
Just whenever you're done, she's just putting it.
Yeah, I know. But anyway. They end up in Grandma's farm. And they go, well, we'll just. That's in the city. County. Why don't y'all look at? So SO don't look after it. Animal control. Respond to it at night. So this cow ran around there for three days. Nobody done nothing with it. I ended up going down here, opened the fence up, put it in the mud house to get it off the damn road.
Sir.
Well.
You've always had.
I'm tired of getting phone calls. What are your counsel? From the sheriff's department and the city. Okay. I asked the officers who were there that night, I says, you know, y'all got any help? No, there's, we're short tonight. Four cruisers. Should have, they said. Okay, you're going like, hmm. It didn't seem like many cruisers. All of St. And annex all this in. How many cruisers are we going to add to? How many firemen did happen? Fire stations in? Who's paying for them fire station? It can be St. Cloud tax based now? Or are the people are annexing and are they going to pay? I said, the whole city will pay for it. There are going to be millions of dollars. One down here. Two point five million. How many they built out there was four point five million? Where's all this money going to come from? Just out of the blue? All the impact fees are already spent. They all. We're going to have to do a lot of money. And you talk about this fire station that appeared, it's not going to be here this September. It's going to be next September. You're putting these people's lives in jeopardy for a year, four months? Because they're not going to be serviced by the county? I know there's a interlocal agreement. Those services, the other one can't get there. You can tell by the way the game played. If it's not. Don't want to get it. But. I just don't think it's right. Those two people into the city. Didn't know nothing about it.
You're talking about two different segments here. When you're talking about Hickory Tree, you're talking about.
But they're all getting annexed at the same time.
Nobody knew which was which.
No.
Okay, then I'm misunderstanding.
I mean, they knew that, they knew that was.
Police.
They caught police, fire, everything. The, the.
You cannot speak right now.
The new development come in, put the cows in it. Yeah, they annexed in the city here probably a year ago.
Yes, and this, a lot of that.
Well, there is no confusion. You just don't know what to do.
I, I can guarantee you our public, uh, public safety chiefs over here, they know exactly what to do with. Once, uh, everything gets.
Alright. Have a good night.
No, sir. No, sir, you had your, no, sir. Sir. Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to leave the room, sir. So excuse me. Sir, I'm asking for him right now. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yep. Yes, sir, you keep speaking out. Please leave the room.
Thank you. Can't just yell out.
Anyone else in the audience speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
And can we please have your name and address for the.
My name is K R. Fact that I was never told. It was important meeting up until when we got noticed about this. This is a community like. Incomes. You don't have any additional income coming in. And I've been told it's. Dollars, I've also been told it's much a thousand dollars. So I think the very minimum, you guys need the money, it sounds like. Police, fire department, everything, city, Saint Cloud. But as citizens of your community, we can't bear the burden of that. Alright, I'm up with another thousand dollars to pay this bill. You should at least give us some. Grand problems, if you will. Way like this. Transition in. You have thousand dollars, five hundred this year, five hundred next year. At least we can adjust our household income. What you guys are doing now, it's slam bang. I don't think that's the best way to take the situation for yourself. I realize you think. Money operates. I just think you ought to reconsider what it's doing to your constituents. How that would reflect in the future of this community.
Yes, sir, thank you. Alright, anyone else in the audience like to address this item? Council discussion? Council member Paul.
This question. Wanted to find out, was after listening to all the residents, um, legally in that the residents purchased these homes were not told about the, um, agreement? Is there something legally that they can do on their end?
And that's a good question. So where I think a lot of the frustration and the concern from the individual property owners has been they did not get information with regard to this. I'm allegedly at the time that they bought. However, they. Some of them have themselves two or three times, maybe more, since some of these encumbrances are in place. So respectfully, I think. With the people that they, the ultimate developer that developed the property and bought their houses from. And so potentially, there are issues with regard to. They gave us a recourse, but I was giving legal advice. Maybe the consistent. Things like this. I think it's gonna be problematic. Reason why it's these encumbrances were in place because the developer of that property came to the city and said, we want water. So in exchange for the water and sewer extension agreements, which is what they were. Some of these, the older ones were done. City actually had to commit to be water and sewer lines laid outside. This was boundaries to provide water and sewer from these encumbrances. So even if the encumbrances, if they somehow need to be input, they still got the water. It's almost more like a contract. That these developments had to save for the water and sewer. I think the court would probably still come in and enforce that because they are getting the benefit. In other words, everybody's own has water and sewer facilities from the city and the encumbrances were those services. So I think they potentially could have caused an action against prior owner of their property, maybe ultimately against the note. From the city's perspective, these encumbrances are enforceable. You know, they were reported as a matter of record. Are part of the. Started that time for the benefit. Any more.
So basically, they wouldn't be living.
They would have been under some other utility. Vision compared to their. They wouldn't be getting centralized water and sewer. They want to understand the person or someone, and so don't have sewer. And there are some of them just have water.
I'm gonna take a motion on the. Ordinance number twenty-five dash two.
Council member Urban.
I, I just wanted to say. Taking the time to speak, I, I, uh, do empathize with, uh, you know, the taxes going up. Especially people who are retired on fixing. Um, as I said at the beginning, um, you know, I, I, I. To the city and I, I feel like, um, in my role here, I have to be responsible. For the city to give fiscal responsibility of safety, consolidating, making sure that we are, um, a, a safe city and, and that we're doing the right thing for all of our sixty, seventy thousand residents. So with that, I'd make.
We have a motion from council member Urban. Second, second from council member Gilbert. Madam clerk, please follow along.
Council member Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Council member Paul. Aye. Council member Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Full one.
Madam clerk, please read the next item.
I don't public here for ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-seven. An ordinance of the city council in St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately plus minus twenty-six point thirty-eight acres.
Go ahead and let the room clear.
I don't public here for ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-seven. An ordinance of the city council in St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately plus minus twenty-six point thirty-eight acres identified as Marlowe Apartments at Nova Road. Project annex twenty-five dash zero 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 one two northeast, north of east for Le Bronson Memorial Highway, west of Bradley Drive, east of Nova Road in accordance with voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Director of Community Development. This case before you tonight is for the voluntary annexation for the project known as Marlowe Apartments at Nova Road. This annexation is also an encumbrance. This request meets the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with us. It is contiguous to state limits and is recently. Is community center with a community center for zoning designation. Here is a graphic representation of the future land use map depicting the future land use designation of community center for context. Here's a graphic representation of the zoning map depicting the current community center core zoning classification for context. On or before March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, staff recommended approval. An incumbent also recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that this council approve number twenty-five dash thirty-one for the voluntary annexation for the project known as Marlowe Apartments at Nova Road. Uh, at this time, staff is available for questions. Uh, this is an encumbrance and section, therefore, this is initiated.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? Can I get a motion from council? Motion approved. Motion approved. Council member Gilbert. Second, second, council member Paul. Madam clerk, please hold on.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Councilor Paul. Aye. Council member Urban.
Aye.
Council member Gilbert.
Aye. Aye. And there are no council actions or items at this time. Next section. Next items on the agenda are ordinances and there were no first reading introductions. Alright, city attorney, I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Alright, so we're managing.
I don't have anything except, um, I meant. Meaning that you received a letter from Representative. Main Street. I thought that was still something.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we wouldn't bring that up if, if staff was okay with that.
Yeah, so, so Representative. It's two hats. Representative. Main Street had requested, um, a letter from the city council for. For historic inventory. Extend up to, I think it was up to Sixth Street. So we do support the inventory. And right now, I don't know that staff's extending the historic dis. See the results of. Um, so, so the question was to. The city council, I think, would approve. Mayor signing that support. Yes, that's, thank you.
Like their. It's just a little support. It's great. It's main street. If we support it. There, there are main.
She, she.
Question.
She, she typically looks for matches, those where, and she's, we had a meeting today talking about Main Street. And it's like, I'm a bit emotional. In general, um, she looks for matches and then she counts the city's contribution as in-kind services. Cause usually there's staff to them associated.
I like what they do. We just did. Last Saturday. Awesome. Time, so I like to continue that, I think Main Street does a great job by that Main Street to get with. So committees with the city, St. Cloud, in kind of community. So it suits the city council to, uh, be able to assist them over a way versus set upon. The Main Street city business. Those are the things that keep clients. I yield back. Alright, no, thanks, sir.
That is all, Mayor, thank you.
You're sitting, man. Amy, councilman Paul.
I want to say thank you to the council. Um, yesterday I was approached by, um, some residents and they were just saying thank you. They see that we're out there, the community showing up and, um, they were happy to see that. So I want to say thank you to the council for showing up because it's definitely making the people smile and they are appreciative of it. So that's all I have.
Council member Urban.
Yeah, to that point, I had the honor of attending the, the, the ceremony at the county cemetery. Every year, it's just incredible, um, learning about the stories and the sacrifices that, uh, the service members made. So, uh, just wanted to make sure we're remembering that of a holiday weekend, uh, it's an honor to be there.
Thank you. Councilman Fletcher. I just wanted to, sorry, Mayor Fletcher, I just wanted to say. Um, sitting in the city for home. Fortunately, I'm respectful with, uh, kidney sound, so I would like to make it out there. Um, I did have one item that I did want to pick up. I was not at the last city council special workshop, um, where there was a couple of discussions on the. Preservation policy and putting a pause on a couple of meetings. Um, when you went back to listen to, to the audio, the best homework that appeared that the, the majority of council members voted. Prior to the placement agenda. And I know that there's already a couple that were scheduled, I believe the, the mayor had a couple, had two. Uh, real association. And I was wondering, uh, since I've had people, you know, I've had the course of time now and have already had it submitted. Also, would be willing to go ahead and take a vote on, on the items. So that. Before I, uh, probably. Pass it out. So that's enough. Thank you. Yeah, as you said, I have two propositions on myself. Kind of hostile. Sit back down and review that. Council member Gilbert. Oops. Um, please. I just appreciate. They look. My heart's often supposed to advance me some. I have seen. I think what you said, I'm. Say cloud. And sell it. Yeah, in effect. Cloud and the services. Could open this, this, um, has to be done in a proper. And I think we've done a good job of doing that. I'm just so proud of the council to understand and be heartfelt in, in decision. And this, um, uh, council. But I have a Bible. Pause in which we, uh. But now it's just my, thanks for my brethren, my sisters here for sitting through it. Find him. This is. Leave the benefits.
Yes, sir. No, and I do agree, it's tough up here. Um, it's also tough, you know, watching our community grow. I was eighteen months old here and it might have improved from sixty-seven hundred people to sixty-eight thousand, maybe. So, um, we all share your concerns with the traffic and, and everything else we have going here. But, you know, we have to, we have to try and find a way to catch back up in this first round. I hate to say this, is probably gonna be the easiest round of, of annexations. It's the encumbrances, the next one's gonna be the young folks and those folks that, um, like where I grew up, um, they'll be in. So it's just about getting the education, getting the information out to the public. And I know that, that, uh, our city manager has done amazing job of doing that this round. And I know I'm gonna be out there with the police chief and the fire chief next month out in Flint Lake, speaking with the citizens. So, you know, we, we really. I'd like to get out there and talk to every citizen that's gonna be annexed. Prior to. Because obviously there's, there's a lot of options. Um, but, um, we're all, we're all members of the same community. With that, uh, you know, I was out there at Memorial Day as well in St. Cloud and, uh, also out here at, uh, all of Stark, Representative Stark. And the museum military. Participated in that one as well. So, uh, it was great to see everybody out there and that's, that's the time where the community really comes out together. It's a special. And with that, we have the information section. Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, city council meeting here, six thirty P M at City Hall. And with that, this may be history.